Five four nine five zero, Execuador. And Education Code Section three, five, one, four, zero, Execuador at six, eighteen hundred, six P M. At this time, let's have our trustee Anderson lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone stand, please.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Okay, roll call. Let's see, let the record show that all board members are present excluding our student board member. Okay, I need to have a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three Board of Education agenda as recommended by the superintendent.
I'll second.
All right. Any comments? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, folks. Welcome this afternoon. This brings us to our public comments. Public comment cards are available in the foyer. Cards are to be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. We provide a maximum of three minutes per person. If translation is needed, an additional three minutes will be given. Please let us know ahead of time so we can ensure that we are prepared. We also have a civility policy. Education Code two twenty prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristics that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth by Section four two two point five five of the Penal Code, including immigration status. All right, folks, let's go ahead and take, make a motion, please, for the agenda approval. Minutes, I'm sorry. Make a motion for the minutes, please.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. This is written kind of strange. It is a recommendation of the superintendent as schools at the Board of Education approve the minutes of the special meeting of April eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Do you second that?
I did.
Okay, at this point, I have.
When you take a vote.
Let's take a vote.
Just a second.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a correction. I brought my agenda from the, the meeting and I have that, the adjournment was Buck and then Anderson seconded.
For the last.
For the minutes that we're approving.
Okay.
I don't have my minutes on me, so I don't rely on your words.
I don't remember.
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll make that correction. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Appreciate that. And so that will bring us into.
Need to make, take a vote.
Our voting, everybody in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, five. All right, now, public comment. In public comment, I have three cards here. Is there any more? Ms. Newton, anybody? No? Okay. All right, so first up, Ms. Lisa Altman, Ms. Brooke Harper, and Ms. Shanny Murray. And three minutes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lisa Altman. I'm a Yorba Linda resident and parent of children attending school in this district. First, I wanted to thank the board for standing up for parents' rights. That's what we elected you to do and so far, that's what's happening. And I'm happy with the positive changes I am seeing since the last election. In particular, thanks for adding board approval as a step for new books being piloted with our kids. A second set of eyes on this book vetting process should be welcomed and I believe it will offer a fresh perspective by those who have been elected to represent the interests of the parents. More collaboration is needed. When I observe educators and union members pushing back on transparency and collaboration, that's only a big red flag to me as a parent. In a prior meeting, I had heard several public commenters question the credentials and qualifications of the board to be involved in this vetting process as an approver. For those individuals, I would ask that they take a step back for a minute, check their ego at the door. Just because you have a particular degree, certificate, or credential, it doesn't mean you have the unchecked and unquestionable authority to teach whatever you want to our children while they're being held as a captive audience in the schools. That's not how the real world works either. There are checks and balances in every job. Teachers and government employees are not exempt from being checked. The second issue that I wanted to raise here is if we can please consider possibly adding cameras to all campuses and all classrooms, inside and outside the classroom. Outside, so we can collect evidence and deter active shooter incidents that are happening across our nation, and inside, so there's full transparency on what's going on in our classrooms. There's been so much debate going back and forth on certain topics like CRT, gender identity studies, drag queen story hour topics, among others. If we can just install the cameras, we would have a source of truth to refer back to when there's debates that come up. Cameras don't lie. There's no twisting of the facts when you're looking at the record. When the public had trust issues with the police, they responded by wearing body cams and it's been very effective in recording in real time what actually happened. Here, the public is having similar trust issues in a different environment, in the school environment, on a nationwide basis. So it seems for the same issue in a different environment, we could potentially try the same solution and see how that works. Cameras could eliminate false stories and gaslighting that's occurring. Cameras would benefit everyone from both sides here. There should be nothing to hide by installing these cameras. Thank you.
Good evening. I came here today to welcome our new superintendent to the district. Welcome. The email that announced your employment mentioned that when state and county policy did not allow a line with the views of his school community, Dr. Churness advocated fervently. Our school community in PYLUSD is over thirty thousand students, spread out over forty-five square miles. It is my hope that you will listen to and represent the entire community throughout the tenure, your tenure with the district, that when you are seeking input from the community, you do it in an ethical and equitable way. I will remind everyone in this room that the affluent members of our community are far more likely to have the time and resources to express their concerns to the leaders both hired and elected to take care of our school district, leaving many parents with no voice. I would, I also like to point out that between our five trustees, only one of them won their elected position by a majority of the vote, and even then, admittedly, it was only by four percent. It was. Trustee Youngblood won with forty-four percent of the vote by less than a thousand votes. Trustee Anderson won by thirty-eight percent of the vote. Trustee Blades won with thirty-eight percent of the vote by less than a thousand votes. Our district is divided, wouldn't you agree? It is my expectation as a homeowner, taxpayer, and a mother that you will seek input from stakeholders in this community from across all spectrums, identity groups, and yes, political affiliations. Workable, reasonable solutions that can be employed by anyone who is willing to make choices for their individual wants and needs while living up to the state education laws and policies put forth by California Department of Education and our lawmakers and upholding values of inclusion and relevant teaching methods that will prepare our kids for the jobs of tomorrow. This is the only way to serve our divided community in a fair and equitable way, in a way that includes and does not exclude the best interest of all stakeholders. I wish you luck because a rich, diverse, rigorous education that accepts our kids for who they are and acknowledges how the world sees them and will see them in the future is what our students deserve. Thank you.
My name is Shanny Murray and I have a twenty twenty-one PYL graduate and a current sophomore in the district. I want to welcome you, Dr. Churness. I was struck by the quote in the announcement stressing your dedication to amplifying student voices. PYL needs this. Countless students spoke out against the CRT ban and shared stories of racism and discrimination and their voices were ignored. Board members want the ability to cut student perspectives from the book piloting process, even though it was the students' high rating of Persepolis that helped lead to a five oh vote of approval. The discussion of creating a safe and respectful environment was put on hold until you could come on board. So I sincerely hope, moving forward, you listen to all students and prioritize their perspective. You also said that you look forward to working with all of the teachers, principals, and support staff. I hope you value the wealth of knowledge and expertise they bring to the table. They spend countless hours supporting and caring for our students, so through bold leadership and transparency, I hope you find ways to showcase to the community the amazing work and value of PYL educators. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That closes our public comment. Our next portion has to do with human resources. I'll need a motion for number one, oral recommendation regarding salary and fringe benefits.
I'll make a motion for the oral recommendation regarding salary and/or fringe benefits.
I'll second.
Comments?
All as well, for me.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to recommend a five percent increase over what our current superintendent makes. That is kind of in line with what we have done with our assistant supes and we could round it up to make it the number easy to three hundred and sixty-five thousand. Five percent would be three sixty-four, nine oh eight sixty. But we could round it up to three sixty-five. I feel comfortable with that.
And we're speaking about whom again? Are we speaking about our assistant supes or we're speaking about our superintendent?
No, we're our superintendent. I said it's inconsistent with what we did with our assistant superintendents.
I see. Okay.
I'm good with the three seventy-five. That's what was put down on the, all of the, what's the word? All the flyers and all the documentation that put out. I'm good with that.
Just a correction, the add was done for three fifty to three seventy-five. There was a range. And so three seventy-five is at the top of the range and it comes out to a seven point six percent increase.
I'm good with three seventy-five.
So I.
Yes, ma'am.
I also think that three sixty-five would be what I would support. We don't want to be a Me Too district. We just gave our employees all seven percent. We intentionally did not give our assistant superintendents seven percent. We went to the five percent. So I think it would be applicable that we would do the same for the superintendent, the current assistant, the current setting where, where Dr. Matthews is and increasing by five percent in line as well. That was on the high end of the spectrum. We didn't get a chance to discuss what that would look like. We didn't get to weigh in on that negotiation piece of the, the dollar amount at all. So, you know, this is my opinion.
Understood.
I did ask for the comps and there's only a handful, I think, I believe, three.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe I can explain it a little bit.
Okay, I just wanted to say Saddleback is three thirty-seven.
Okay.
And they have a ADA of twenty-two thousand, Fullerton.
Anaheim Union.
Anaheim Union's twenty-five ADA and they're at three thirty-one. So I think, you know, the three sixty-five is, is a good salary.
Okay. Well, let me, let me read what I had that was presented to Dr. Churness along with Hya and through our attorney. As far as the employment of Dr. Churness as superintendent, this is based upon the following terms. Dr. Churness shall receive an annual salary of three seventy-five, three hundred and seventy-five thousand. Dr. Churness shall be entitled to twelve days of leave of absence for illness or injury with full pay. He may accrue and accumulate sick pay as allowed by the Education Code. He shall also be entitled to twenty-four working days of annual vacation with pay in addition to holidays as defined in Section thirty-seven, two, two, zero of the Education Code. He'll also be entitled to accrue, accrue, excuse me, vacation up to a maximum of two years vacation, forty-eight days, at which point accrual shall be deemed cap. Accrued but not, or unused vacation, again, up to the maximum of forty-eight days, shall be paid out upon conclusion of employment, but may not be cashed out prior to the conclusion of employment. He shall also receive a monthly car allowance of five hundred dollars to cover the cost of transportation expenses incurred in the connection with district business. He shall not receive any other car or mileage allowance other than reimbursement for driving in lieu of flying to district-approved workshops or conferences. However, this reimbursement obligation shall not exceed seven hundred miles for a single workshop or conference. The district shall reimburse Dr. Churness of all actual and necessary expenses incurred by him with, in the scope of his employment, in accordance with applicable district policy. The district shall pay Dr. Churness annual membership in the Association of California School Administrators and any other organization approved by the board. He shall receive all employment benefits granted to the district cabinet employees, including a laptop and cellphone. If the district elects to terminate the employment of Dr. Churness without cause, it shall pay him a lump sum payment within forty-five day calendar days, following of notice of termination, an equal amount to one-year salary or the salary for the remainder of the agreement, whichever is less. So that was the, the, and the full scope of the contract will be put out for the public to view as well. And it, I'm pretty sure I'm okay with three seventy-five.
Can, can you tell me who negotiated the contract?
So that was negotiated with our, our agency, the agency that, that hired.
Who, Hya?
And, and our attorney as well.
David Huff.
So David Huff, OHH, and Hya were the negotiating groups.
So that's really not within Hya's realm, and that wasn't within their scope of work. The board is supposed to be negotiating that, number one. Two, we usually have time as we're working through the process of a superintendent's search to have closed session time to work through these conversations. Unfortunately, it's, Dr. Churness, it's nothing against you at all, we just didn't get a chance to have this conversation in closed session to, to ask these specific questions with our attorney.
True.
I contacted David today to ask him the questions that I had. He told me that this contract was just provided to him, or, you know, what the, what the amount was and he didn't, he didn't negotiate that. And, and so I have concerns about that. This is on the high end of the spectrum. This should have been a discussion that the board had and we didn't have this at any point. The only thing that was discussed early on was what the window is going to look like, but the actual term of what the dollar amount was never, was never discussed.
Did, did we not talk about any closed session when we?
We were never able to do that.
We actually gave the window to Hya.
So I think, I think that's, that's the point that I'm coming to, is we were okay with the range from three fifty to three seventy-five. I think now we can talk about whether you want to adjust that or not. I think based on the expectations that we have and the community has and the process that we went through to bring Dr. Churness in, I feel very comfortable with three hundred and seventy-five thousand. So I, I don't have a problem with it, but I think it's valid that we have our concerns aired and we talked about that. So I'm fine with it. I hear what you're saying, though.
I'm fine with it as well.
It's, it's the five percent that I think would be appropriate just because it's in line with the assistant superintendents. We're actually going, we're actually going over the seven percent that, that other people and our.
But it's not an increase. It's a new contract with a, a new hire.
But it is an increase in the amount that we currently pay our superintendent. So it was an increase to that point.
Was there an increase between, between El Sasser?
There was not.
Okay, so there was no increase there?
And there was not between Doug Demany to Dr. Plucko to Dr. El Sasser.
So we're behind?
Yeah, so we're behind is what you're saying.
So, well, and there was no increase to employees either during that time period.
Well, there, that was a whole different Oprah altogether, so we're not even going to.
We're not behind. We've, we've paid.
Yeah. I have the, the salary increases for the last ten years and they're all in line. We are, we have been a Me Too district and everybody has gotten the, the raises equal.
That's theoretical. We've theoretically been a Me Too district. That's not a policy.
It's not nothing in policy and nothing in contract.
It's not in anybody's contract.
But when you look at the history of it, that's what it is.
But that's what it is. And the superintendent received in twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, the exact same increase as assistant supes and plum, apple, CSEA. In twenty twenty-three, so right now, our superintendent has, there's been a zero increase and so this is what it would be.
Okay.
So we're not behind. We're right, everybody's been getting raises and, and our assistant supes just got it, what, last Tuesday night, you just got your raise? And then the, the month before, plum, CSEA, and I will also say the board.
The board did as well.
Got their raise as well.
Those raises were also retroactive, so if you want to take that and then add it to what they're getting the rest, I mean, theoretically, we could talk back and forth about numbers. I feel okay with three seventy-five.
I'm good with three seventy-five.
Yeah, I'm good with three sixty-five.
Okay.
All right, so the motion is on the table right now. We have a motion of.
Regarding salary for fringe benefits, we do have a motion.
Correct.
Yeah, but there's not a dollar amount associated with it.
It's the, well, it is the oral recommendation.
It is.
Yeah. So do we want to?
I want to keep it at three seventy-five.
So if we vote, then we're voting on keeping the terms as is.
Yeah.
That's what we're voting on.
So just, just to be clear, I don't think that ten thousand dollars is going to make or break. And I, and I'm going to vote for the contract, but the ten thousand dollars really is to me because it's a fiscally responsible thing to do and it aligns with what we pay our assistant superintendent. So when we go above and beyond that, it, it just reflects on, on our choices. I am happy to have Dr. Churness here. His, his resume and educational experience and I'm incredibly looking forward to, to working with Dr. Churness. I am glad you fight for kids. I love to fight for kids as well. I am, I, I look forward to, to what the next few years is going to bring. That has nothing to do with it. It's just the fiscal responsibility of, of aligning it with the same, so.
And I think there's a balance, in my opinion, on fiscal responsibility and expectations. I mean, we're, we're taking, we're taking the leap to say we, we have big expectations for Dr. Churness and I think he's going to do very well. And I think that this is, as, as his employer, making decisions on his contract, I think this is easily in line with what we're wanting.
Yeah, and I think the three sixty-five, when you look at comparable comps in Orange County, is also reflective of that.
Okay.
So.
Noted. So we have a motion on the table. Let's go ahead and vote on this. All in favor?
We should probably do this one at a time.
Yeah, let's roll call.
Okay, roll call. All right, Ms. Buck?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
And aye. Vote carries four, one. All right. Moving on to our second portion, this is the consideration and possible improvement, I'm sorry, consideration and possible approval of the superintendent's employment agreement. Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three. I need a motion?
I'll make a motion for the consideration and possible approval of the superintendent's employment agreement, Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, three.
I'll second.
Okay. Interplays, Marilyn. Anderson, comments?
My only comment is, I just would like to make this conditional upon the completion of the background check. It has not been fully done and.
Fully.
We just got fifty pages of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you, if you read it, there's a section that's missing.
What's that section?
It's the DMV and I'm assumed that Dr. Churness has a valid driver's license, but I'm fine to vote for it. I just would want it on condition.
Now, I, I'm going to say no on that one. We didn't even have with, when Mike Matthews was hired, he was hired the same day, we've received no background check whatsoever. So this, this is a little bit.
But our district policy, Dr. Lopez, can you explain what our district policy is on, well, we learn.
Was this what the little meeting was in the back?
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that I was not off base. So what is our district policy on background checks for employees? It's done on condition, is that correct?
If you're referring to like the fingerprinting or DOJ, that's after the approval has been made and that's just part of the onboarding process.
And it's done on, as long as there's nothing that, then it's fine. It's correct?
If something were found, you know, then obviously that's shared with the board.
So then that's standard practice.
Standard practice. So that's why I say I'm fine approving it. It's just, you know, on condition of the.
Okay. Excuse me, excuse me, guys. Folks, folks, keep it down, please.
So did you make, did you make a substitute motion for that, Ben?
Well, are you, are you asking for new procedure or just what the standard procedure is?
The standard procedure is.
Just calling out.
I'm not, just following standard procedure that we are going to approve the contract tonight, which I'm very happy to do, just on completion of.
So you're just asking that he gets treated as any other employee?
Yeah.
Which would be standard.
Yeah, which would be totally standard.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not asking for anything special or different.
So we don't need a different motion? It's the same motion?
It's the same motion, but just.
We're just confirming.
Confirming what our standards are.
Perfect, let's go.
Awesome.
All right. Sounds good. Okay. With that, let's go ahead and take a vote. Do we need a roll call on this one as well? All right. Roll call, Ms. Buck?
Aye.
All right. Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
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 All right, and aye, five oh. Excellent. Okay, Dr. Churness, welcome aboard. So sir, if you would like to say a few things, go ahead and come on up to the podium.
Thank you very much, Board of Education. It's an honor to be here. This is, I've, I've spent several weeks now and, and months looking, looking at this district, talking to people. It's a wonderful district made up of people that really care about kids and, and that's what I'm all about. And I think that I can make it better and that's what I'm be dedicated to doing is working with all of you, making sure that our parents have a voice, making sure that our kids have a voice. And what I'm learning is people in this community have strong opinions about everything and that's okay. There is a unifying voice here and that is that everybody wants what's best for the students in this community. And so my role will be to make sure that all of these difference of opinions on how to get there, we stay focused on what's best for kids. And so, and that is about amplifying student voice. It's about bringing parents to the table. It's about bringing the community to the table and that's what my focus will be on. I think, as I mentioned, while this is a wonderful district, there's a lot of students in this district that are not achieving a grade level and I think we could do a better job at that. And so that'll be one of my primary focuses, is to get more kids to meet and exceed grade level standards, particularly in math and English. And so that'll be my focus and I can't wait to get started, so thank you.
All right, welcome aboard, Dr. Churness. I, I look forward to seeing what you have planned for the district. I'm sure everything's going to be awesome. Comments?
Well, I just, I, after meeting you, as we did a, a couple of weeks ago, I went back and I looked at, at your district and did a little more research and looking at your English Language Arts and your math, your meet or exceeded grade, grade levels in the areas of our greatest need, which is our English Language learners and our students with disabilities. Your test scores and your, your S-Back results are wonderful. Your test scores and your, your S-Back results are wonderful, and I'm looking forward to seeing how what your leadership has done can impact what we're doing here. So that was my biggest takeaway after learning a little bit more about you. Those are two areas of great interest of, and passion for me as well, so welcome aboard. I'm looking forward to working with you on these things.
I'm just really excited to have you on, in our district, and to watch your leadership, and really to help our English language learners get to that need or exceed, and help some of our long-term English language learners, get them reclassified, and so that they are able in high school to take all the classes that they need, so thank you for taking us on, and look forward to working with you.
Yeah, I'm excited, as all of us are. I mean, obviously, we're excited that you're going to be here. I'm, I'm really excited to see with your financial experience and your background, how you can impact us fiscally, as well as with the students, that always, it's going to, it's going to end up benefiting the students in enormous ways, so I'm, I think there's, and I want to thank HYA and everybody involved in the process. It was a great, I think, actually, it was handled probably better than it, than it would have been, had it been anybody else. So thank you very much for everybody, and welcome aboard.
I am thrilled. I can't wait for you to start. I think you have great plans for our district, and I know the English learners in our special ed. department, you know, especially with our new English learner director position being filled by you shortly, but on, not only that, I think all of our students, all of our district, we have a lot of kids that are not at grade level, and I, I'm very confident that you will get us to where we need to be. I'm just really thrilled, I'm excited, and I can't wait to see what the next year holds.
All right, folks, with that said, that brings us to our adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. All right, we are adjourned at eighteen thirty-two.